...meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Fargo Park District, Monday, January 23, 3:00 PM with the special topic of Executive Director Search. This, we, I'm gonna read this here. The next, the item on the agenda is Executive Director Candidate Search. This item may be discussed in an executive session. A legal authority for closing this portion of the meeting is North Dakota Century Code 44-04-19. Dot two. The topic, the purpose is the executive session is an interview. At this time, a motion would be in order to discuss moving to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Executive session we go.
So your guy, give a name, it was Danny.
Danny.
Danny Lee Guyce. I like it. Hi, we have a Jake. And we call him Jacob because that's what you're supposedly supposed to do. And I, it's caused him nothing but problems. He was just, we would've just named him Jake.
I guess my parents got it right, 'cause I'm just a week.
Yeah. You're not picking for it yet?
Nope.
Alright, well, we'll get started. First of all, welcome to Fargo, Dan.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here.
Like you said, you're, you're timing is, you didn't get to the third interview shift, so that was quite a deal. But, we're glad to have you. I think I mentioned you're the fourth of five. We got one more set this week, and we will go from there. Can I figure out what we did next? Sure. Alright, so, we've got two hours set aside. This is your last stop of the day. And, you know, I think you've been briefed on the format, but just to remind you, the time, fifteen minutes, about who you are, what you have done, why you want to come here, you know, all that sort of stuff. And then, we've got a series of questions in six buckets, if you will, related to culture, management style, leadership, budget, wrap-up, and change, leadership, problem solving. So we'll just go around them all, probably a total of about thirty-five questions. So, if you wanna pace yourself, and if you wanna try and finish up about five o'clock, or if you can get done earlier, that's fine too. But, if you wanna use all four, or all two, all two hours, that's great too. So, with that, we'll open the floor up, and tell us about who you are, and all that kind of stuff.
Perfect. Well, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Dan Guyce, and I really, it's an honor to be here. And I know that there are forty-six candidates. And the fact that I'm one of five for this organization, you know, let that in itself is, is more than worth the trip. And I just, I just want you to know that. That I really appreciate that, and I recognize that. So, about me, a little bit of personal life, no, going to education. I'm married, and I've been for, I should know the answer to this, right exactly how long, but at least thirty-four years. She's a wonderful woman. She actually, her grandparents were off the go from Norway. And one of the reasons that she wants to come here is because if she doesn't, she's afraid she's gonna lose her Norwegian accent. So, that's one of the motivating factors. I have two boys, and one's name is Trapper, the other's Katie. They're both from, in fact, the older one just got, just got married this last fall in Whitefish, Montana, where I went back to be part of that, which was a great experience. And the younger one, graduated from college right in Arizona, in Missoula, Montana. He filmed, actually. And then, he got a job, and Kirk launched me, but he's lost his job, so I'm expecting a phone call anytime. But, yeah, your kids are always, they always know your phone number, and I'm sure that they'll, you'll hold me when they need me. But, you know what, my family is very important, and, and I can say that as I've progressed through my career, that it's always been a major factor, is the inspiration of me doing it, taking the job. And, and so, I can say that, that I grew up in Seadramp, so I, I am from the Midwest. I was, I was almost in my late twenties when I, when I finally left. I attended a two-year school there, Kirkwood Community College, where I have actually a degree in law enforcement. I didn't start off wanting to be in Parks and Rec. That was not my plan. My plan was to be on the Sheriff's Department. I have education, and I received certifications in emergency medical training. I have, I had an EMT-A, and an EMT-I. And then, so, what happened with that is that after I finished with a two-year degree, I still had some work with actually the paramedic side. I started to go up on the road and do practice, also, with real law enforcement. And, and some things I found out, that I realized during those discussions. I wish that I would've known before I studied in the program. My high alcoholism rates, and high force rates. If you're in the Sheriff's Department, you're gonna have to spend at least ten years in jail before you can even hit the road. And none of that appealed to me whatsoever. So I put on breaks, and had a long conversation with my dad. And, and he goes, "Well, son, you know, what is it that you've been doing so far?" And he was right. I'd been working in the recreation field since I was in ninth grade, in one form or another. I started at residential camp, YMCA, where I worked summers. And then, transitioned over to their, to their downtown branch, where I did everything from being a child boy to being a gym teacher, the longest time. And so, it wasn't, he wasn't far off. I did enjoy the work. I never imagined that, you know, that I could make a career out of it. I thought it was just something you'd do while you're going to school. But I did some more research, and I realized, came to the new conclusion that I wanted to be a Parks Recreation Director, more than anything. And so, I went back to school. By then, I had gotten married. In fact, my second year of my four-year degree, we had our first son. And so, I was working two jobs, I was taking care of, taking care of my new child, and then going to school all the time. So, those were some trying years, I can tell you that. I can say that I'm a pull-up-by-the-bootstraps kind of a guy. I think that my father gave me a thousand dollars to get through school, and that was it. In fact, I finished off paying my student loans when I was thirty-nine years old, just in time to start with, with my kids having their love. So, I worked hard to get where I am, and to get through school. But I understood the value of education. I was fortunate enough out of school to get a job with the city of Clinton, Iowa, right on the Mississippi River, about thirty-five thousand people or so, as their Recreation Coordinator. I learned an awful lot. I was in charge of youth sports, special events, and I also ran their fitness program. Interesting, interesting little story about that is that their outdoor swimming pool was right next to the Mississippi River, and it was the country's first zero-depth pool. And it was really just fabulous. And so, and so, it was just kind of unique, being in that setting, and working in that environment. I always knew though, because I wanted to be a Parks Recreation Director, that was really just recreation, that at some point I was gonna move on. And, and I think too, that for recreation, that, you know, there's a, generally, there's a lot of longevity. I mean, some of the people I've talked to today have been here twenty years, twenty, thirty years, like, wow, that's so incredible. And, and by the way, I think that says a lot of positive about this, about this organization as well. But, I knew that there wasn't any space for me to move up in that organization, so I had to move on. And when I did, I had got my first director job, actually, which was in Breckenridge, Minnesota. And that's how I, I first became aware of you folks, and the district here, and what Fargo was all about. I was there for a number of years. And again, I was the Recreation Director, I was in charge of parks, parks being run by the Public Works Department. But again, every job I ever had has been a learning experience. I started, I worked on a grant there, for example. I wrote my first couple of successful grants while I was in Breckenridge. And I was there during, I can't remember, the oh-six, the oh-seven floods. You know what, so I get that part, you know, we lost, when I lived on, had built our, had an open house, lost houses on the other side, we lost a house across the street. My house survived. Why? For one thing, I'm one of the luckiest people, I know. I mean, I, I think that, okay? Plus, we failed like crazy to keep that water from, you know, taking over our area. But, what we finally knew was, again, I wanted to be a Parks Recreation Director. I had a tremendous opportunity in Whitefish, Montana, to go there and be their Parks Recreation Director. And there, we did some marvelous things. I think that, that one of the major accomplishments, I had really several major accomplishments there, but I was in charge of facility maintenance for, for all public facilities. Certainly in charge of parks and recreation services. We, we had things like, we maintained the bull market, the entryway to the city, which was very important to a tourism town. And then, and then, of course, the facility maintenance. I hadn't really been involved with that until then, so again, I picked something else up. You know what, I would've stayed there for a long time. In fact, it was really important that we, that our boys were at the same place from junior high through high school. We thought that was critical. And we were able to do that. In fact, with my youngest son, turned eighteen, and he was at the very end of his high school career, I had an opportunity to move to Alaska. Well, Alaska was about the only place I could go from Whitefish, Montana. And so, yeah, "Do you wanna be Parks Recreation Director in Alaska? Sure, sign me up." When I had the conversations with my wife, it looked lucrative on paper, with the pay and all that, but you know what, it was still a very serious conversation. We, we ended up, after that, spending many months in park. And, and of course, then, we, the moment we thought our boys were gonna go with us, they chose not to. They chose to stay in Whitefish. And so, that made it particularly hard. When we got there, I think that, that things went well. It was, you never had enough resources to do all the things that you needed to, or wanted to do. So there was plenty, that I could work twelve hours a day, seven days a week, and really never touched the tip of the iceberg on it, which, you know, is a good thing, but at the same time, I, I personally need to feel success. And I didn't feel success there, because it was just, it was, there were too many rocks in the backpack. And, and I remember the, the first time that I met the rural manager, he came to my office and, and he goes, "Danny, you know, I'm gonna tell you, the, we, our motto is, we do, we do more than less." You know what, I had no idea that, really, man. But after being there for a while, I knew exactly what I meant. And I understood it. I think that, you know, that you have the, you have the, you know, careful taxpayer dollars, you have to set priorities. And, and I think that we were well-funded, we didn't really have the manpower that we needed. But, what a great experience. Twenty-five thousand square mile jurisdiction. The north end was right at the base of Mount Kinnit for the most part, and if I went to the other end, I could almost be in Anchorage. It was, it was huge. I had five libraries, had multiple swimming pools. Most of the rec programs, we had a few, most of it was facilitation of user groups. That was the primary, that was the primary deal. And so, why did I leave Alaska? I left Alaska, because my family's really important to me. Because I couldn't get my kids to go with me, and the rest of my family's back here. You know what, that, that was just too much to bear. So, we tried to find a place where I could still move up in the career, and, and then, and then try to be closer to home, if you will. Well, we ended up in Iroquois Falls, I took, and Arrow was the Assistant Director. I can say that before I took that job, they didn't have that position. They created it as part of a succession plan, because the director had been there for years and years, twenty-plus years. He was getting very tired, about eighteen months. And the idea was, I was gonna come in, he'd show me the ropes, teach me how things went, so on and so forth. And then, and then, I'd have a good shot at it. Well, that, that time came, and I didn't get it, for a variety of reasons. And I still speculate today about what that might be. It always bothered me a little bit. They brought in a new director, and then, I consider, they then put me in a Recreation Superintendent. And I'm sorry, but that wasn't my career path. I wanted to be a Parks Recreation Director. Parks were so important to me. So, I had a, I had a brief stint, between my wife losing her job there, the company that she worked for shut down. We ended up moving to Pine Dale, Wyoming, where I was there for just a year. I worked as a, as a aquatics coordinator. Little town, about twenty-six hundred people, but wow, you should've seen the facility that they had. They had aquatic, recreation facility, it was twenty-five million dollar state-of-the-art place. It was just phenomenal. So, so I hung out there for a while, and again, no parks, but I was making a living and taking care of my family. And, but I knew I wanted more, I wanted a better benefit package, I wanted more responsibility. And so, I, I applied for it, and received, was approved for a job in Lake Havasus in Arizona. And I can tell you, well, I never once thought in a million years that I'd ever wanna move to the desert. But when I went there for the, for the first interview, the fact that the lake was right there, you know what, it was like, it was like a beach, it was like a beach feeling right in the desert. It was really something. I don't know if you've ever been there or not, but it was, it's a lot of fun, it's a lot of fun. And the special events that they had there, and, you know, and the opportunities were just tremendous. I, I have to say that I bought a dumpster. I was ready to dig in, I was ready to stay there. I was okay. But, but for me, again, I talk about my personal success, and what I need for that. It took me a while to realize that, 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 you know what, that they weren't gonna provide what I was looking for. And I'll say that because, and again, the best example I can think of is that we had two soccer fields there in town for a thousand kids. It was, it was ridiculous. And, and of course, with the, with the heat being the way it is there, you had small windows with opportunity for, you know, for, for play, for, for use. And so, we, we decided to hire a consultant, a consultant did field analysis, gave them a great plan, we gave it to the city council, the park board was behind it. And, and you know that, when as soon as that plan was looked at, and they talked about it in public setting, it went on the shelf, and it's still collecting dust right now. And that was really kind of it for me, and I realized that, that even though the town had just a vast amount of potential, that, that recreation was not their priority. But it was mine, and so, and so, I felt like I was compelled to look again, because again, I needed, I needed to do more, I needed to move the ball forward. I, I like making touchdowns, I really do. And so, and so, I applied for it, and then, I got a job with the Menasino Parks Recreation Department. It's four hours north of San Francisco, between the redwoods and the ocean. I can see the ocean from when I'm in dishes, and I get my house, which is just phenomenal. And, and I can say this, that I loved being there. And, and I think that we've done some tremendous things already, we have, we have clients to do more. Certainly, there are challenges, the mandatory minimum wage increases that the state is instilled, we're gonna be at fifteen dollars in a couple of years, it's created just a tremendous hardship. Because of that, we're trying to figure out how to mitigate that. We're going through a five-year projection model, as I sit here, where we've done, we've gone, we've moved forward with an asset management plan. We've got the basics, and now we're taking some of the bigger items, and we're breaking it down into the reality. It's like, you don't need to replace the whole filter, you know, in twenty years, you just need to replace the sand. I mean, that kind of thing, in order to, when we take that asset management plan, and then we put it into the five-year projection model, that, what we're looking for, especially with the increase in minimum wages, when is the bottom gonna drop out? When is the revenue projections not gonna be able to sustain the expenses that we're foreseeing? And so, we're very concerned about that. And so, that's why we're trying to look down the road as far as we can, so that we can plan appropriately. You know, one of the things I'm concerned about is that you can really only take fees so far till, till it just doesn't meet the market. You know, they're gonna go someplace else. And, and I think that the important part about really any organization I've been involved with is long-term sustainability. That's so important. And you have to look down the road, you have to see what's coming, you have to be prepared for it. Because if you don't, you'll get surprised, because nobody wants to be surprised. So, I can also say this, that, that I've applied for this job before. I, I applied for this job about forty years ago, when it came open. And a gentleman, I can't remember everybody's names this morning, because I've met so many great people, but he remembered me when I applied for a job at this organization like fifteen years ago. And, I don't know, I don't even remember what position it was anymore, but I've known about the district for a long time. I know the great things that you do, and that you are progressive, and that you are moving that ball down the field. And, and you know what, I've, I've always wanted to be a part of that great tradition, and, and what you provide in the community. So, when I saw this again, of course, the people I have, the friends and family that I have in the area, "Dan, do you want this job to open again?" "Sure, no." I'm glad I saw it, because I had to put my big word out, "Welcome, hell." And, and again, I get back to the fact that, well, here I am, one of five, and I'm as close as I've ever been. And so, I just feel thrilled about that. But, this has been a new thing for me. I've, I've wanted to come here before, and I felt like, I really feel like, that it's, I think things are funny things sometimes. I feel like everything I've done has, has brought me to this moment. All the training, and all the, the experience I have have led me to this moment in time, where, you know, where you folks are gonna have to make a harder decision. And, so that's really my, my education and, and experience. I'd like to see that, that, you know, let me back up a second. I understand, okay, that, that when somebody might look at my, my resume, and especially when I compare it to the people that are here already, with those huge longevity timelines, twenty, thirty years, that, "Well, Danny, you sure do move around." Well, that was the problem. You know what, it, it has always been my choice. I've left, because I wanted better leadership, I wanted more transparency. I wanted to move the ball down the field when I, when I felt like I didn't have the support. And so, and you know what, I also wanted to provide the very best for, for my family. The things that intrigue me about here is, and I wanted the longevity of this district, and everything that you do, the seventy special events, the thousand programs, the, the super cool projects that you've got, you know, on the drawing board right now. But, you know what I really got to say was, me with the staff, and, and the, the sense of family, and togetherness, it was a very, very tight group. And, you know what, I can say that I don't, I've not always felt that by the places that I've been before. And I think that in the end, really, it's, it's about the people. In the end, it's always about the people. And so, and so, it's, I just wanna let you know that I recognize that, I feel that. And, and I think that's a huge part of, of, of the attraction here, all of those things that I've listed. And, and certainly from a personal standpoint, that, you know, like, I, I make a very good salary in California, they pay me well. I work hard, but they pay me well. But the cost of living is so great, I can tell you that to get a, to buy a fixer up home there, on the coast, is four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. I'll never build a home there. And so, that makes me feel not quite as part of the community to a certain extent. I think that's an important part about, you know, the buying in to a community. And so, I can see the writing on the wall, you know. I read the, I read those articles that, that talk about, you know, the ten places that people are leaving from. And California is one of them, and I can't help but think that it's because of the cost of living is so great. And so, and so, I know here that, that the cost of living is twenty to thirty percent or less here, and, and this position has a very generous salary. That combination would be just fantastic for me on a personal level. And I, I tell my wife, we sure love it as well. So, all those reasons have compelled me to, to send my application in, to, you know, to go through this process, and, and, I don't know, I'm not sure what else to add to all that.
We have a series of thirty-five questions to get more information out of you.
Sure.
No worries.
I'm very good.
No, I'm saying, don't worry.
Let's see, let's see how the onesies are.
We'll get more information.
I, I do wanna know, how far is Whitefish from Fargo?
Uh, it's a, it's, I know that you get on the train, it's a straight shot, I think it takes about a day and a half, maybe? I don't remember exactly. I've only taken that ride once, I don't recall. But I can say right now, if you could get from my, get my house on the Menasino Coast to, to Whitefish, I, I just, I go on my motorcycle, actually, it's a little slow, you know, the way I, I'm, I like adventure as much as possible. And it took me, it's a twenty-two hour ride, or drive. And I know that, at least this way, it's a straight shot on the train, I can be there, you know, go to sleep, wake up, and Whitefish. And so, all the, you know, that, that I've always started taking into consideration too, is how do I stay in touch with my family, you know, that's, again, is still important for me. So that's a great question.
I was hoping you have. It's one thousand two hundred.
Sure, I, I don't know exactly, I just know it's a lot shorter than what it is now.
Do you wanna start, or you wanna kick it off?
The one thing you mentioned is that you can see the ocean from your house.
Yeah.
Obviously, you can't see the ocean from Fargo.
Many hours.
Just, just wondering, yeah, and you've lived in the Midwest, so you're not a foreigner to that, but just wondering what you feel the transition would be like, moving from California to Fargo?
Well, I think, again, I think that personally, my, my, our family economics would be a fast improvement. And, the transition, you know what, you know, I guess that, you know, I think the hard part really would be, it's not the physical moving, you know, I've already looked at the housing market, and know that I can get a house here for, you know, a decent house for under two-hundred thousand dollars. You know, I've, I know that I can rent, you know, at a reasonable rate, and that there's availability. But it's really gonna be, and I don't wanna sound cheesy, okay, I don't wanna sound cheesy, but, but I really do love where I am now, and the people are fantastic. They're very warm and giving, they, they've, they've taken us in, and it will be telling them that I'm gonna leave. That'll be the hard part, because, because there is a, a, a lot of relationships there, and we are doing great things, and there is so much more work that has to be done. So that, that'll be the tough part.
Okay. Thank you.
In, in your role right now, what are three aspects of that role that give you the most satisfaction?
Okay, well, and again, I'm gonna use the word cheesy again, just 'cause it describes it, but, but I think for me, really, that having, having events, or programs, or facilities that, that draw and attract families. One of the greatest really, things that I get emotionally is, when, when I've got an event, and, and families come, and I can fill a parking lot, full of folks that, that wanna participate, and spend time together. That, that's one of them. I think that, 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 again, I believe that the system that we got in place now is far better than when I first got there. I think we've made a lot of improvements. And notice when I, when I talk about improvements, I always say "we," because it's never, it's never me, it's never I, it's always a team, and I can, I can not realize that, and I understand that. And so, and, you know, small things, like, now we have, we have a retirement plan, we've got policies and procedures that we didn't have before. It's easier to make decisions. We're, we're looking in the future. I've got, back to last month or so, that we've reopened, we've got a dead project about doing, so, phase three of our, of, of the facility, that's pretty much a gym and a kitchen, and so on and so forth, and that thing is an emergency shelter in case, you know, things really get bad. And so, and so, that's really created a lot of excitement, or I thought that was, that it was already approved, but people had forgotten, like, it was the turnover, you know, on the board with the staff. And so, we've revived that, and, and you know what made me think about that, was we just had a ten-year celebration of the facility. And, and during the celebration, one of the gals that had been teaching lessons in the community for like fifty years, in fact, her, her name's on one of the walls at the facility. She brought up about the gym project and the kitchen, and the crowds went crazy. I was, nobody had even talked about it, my whole time there. And so, I was like, wow, there's some energy and excitement to this. And I, I caught on to that right away, and sure enough, I began moving forward, and we, we put together a committee and everything to look, to look for that. So, I think that having a vision of going forward, and figuring, and the tools in order to do that, I think, is, is something that I've really enjoyed doing. I can't help but think also that, from a financial basis, I think that, and I'm probably using the word a lot, is sustainability. You know what, I think that it's, it's not about me, I mean, it's about the organization and the long-term viability of those services and facilities. And so, when we talk about sustained, sustainability, well, where are we gonna be in ten years? Where are we gonna be in twenty years? We need to look down the road, we need to figure that out, we need to figure out where you wanna be, and then look at your resources, and then figure out how you're gonna use those resources to get from A to B. And so, one of the things that I've been able to do is to create a long-term vision, where before, you know what, they were struggling day to day. Because one of the favorite words that we use, and, and we're in right now, is discontinued. Yeah, they put together a twenty-five million dollar facility, but more than half the systems that are in that facility were discontinued by the time that they put it in there. So, we're already remote enough, and it takes me an hour to drive to the main road. And so, and four hours to get to a major city. And so, when we get, when we want service, or help, or support, it's, it's a thousand dollars just for someone to get in the car before they even get to us. And we have to factor that into our, into our finances, which even creates more for it. So, one of the things that, that I'm trying to do is to, is to, not only go up the long-range financial plan, but what can we do as a community to help offset some of those costs? A real simple example would be the maintenance of our fitness equipment. We are, I mean, this organization's coming in, they're coming in four times a year. We already have these organizations coming in, they're coming in four times a year. Like, you know, they were stuck right down, down in between those times, right? But every time they showed up, it was thirty-five hundred dollars, four times a year. And so, well, I said, you know what, let's send someone to repair maintenance school, and send them to the factory school, get a training. Well, that's what we did, we hired somebody, we sent them to the school, affected a couple of them now, and we've already saved thousands of dollars, and our stuff gets fixed right away. And so, that's just one example, but to look inside and try to figure out the resources on the inside that you can utilize that maybe hadn't been thought about or implemented in the past.
Yeah. So I got the next question. What is one professional mistake you've made you wish you could go back and fix?
Yeah, that's an easy one for me, because it was, it was somewhere, I was, I was actually in, I was actually in Whitefish. And it was something, it had, I can't remember exactly, but it had to do with soccer fields, and we weren't ready to have them, you know, be used, but the soccer teams wanted me out there, and, and they were coming, and they were cutting the chains and just doing it, right? Well, I, I got in a conversation with this gal, and wanted to know why we kept locking this up. And what I said was this, I'll never forget it, I said that I didn't care. I said I didn't care. Yeah, I'll never say that again. You know, but it's not like they had any special implications, but I don't know, and I thought about that for a long time. And I still think about it today. It was, I think it was a lesson that I wish I would have learned a different way, but it was, it was the absolute wrong thing, and I think that's probably one of the worst things that I've ever done, since I told that customer who was relying on us to provide those services that I didn't really care how she felt or what she needed. We were, we had things that we needed to do. Yeah, that was a big, big mistake.
I don't care. That's serious, no, I have to say it.
Oh, we'll flip it. How about, tell us about your proudest professional moment?
I'm sorry, oh, proudest.
And what was it, and what were the results?
Sure. Um, you know, I, I just, I actually considered myself one of the luckiest, most fortunate people I know. And so, I have really actually a lot of those, but I can say, I can say probably it was, again, with City Whitefish, we, we did a lot of stuff last year, but they had a, and let's, let's preface this, this town had a lot of money, okay, they had a lot of money. And so, you, you go to, you went to the park maintenance shop when I first got there, and they're working on the truck, okay, we pulled the truck into the bay, half the truck would be sticking out of the bay. I mean, it was absolutely ridiculous, it was, it was a maintenance shed. And for that town, that was absolutely ridiculous. And so, I began to, to work with, of course, my, my city manager in Park Court, and we identified some land, and we understood, you know, and we went to the, we went to the planning and development phase, and, and then last year I was there, we figured out a magnificent park maintenance facility, that also was designed so that as the community grows, you can add on to it, expand as needed. And, and I'm really glad that, that really is probably, because they needed it so bad, because they had a lot of responsibility. And, but I had to get a credit, I mean, I remember one of the things that when I wrote this up, you know, I remember the mayor at the time goes, yeah, that, you know, he, he mentioned the name of our apartment, that he could get the job done even with a desk under a tree. It's like, well, really? Really? And so, and so it was, it was just the right thing to do, and I, I think the town has benefited, you know, very much from that ever since. Thank you.
I made one up, but I'm going to save it for later. How's that make you anxious?
Sure.
Just kidding. Tell us some of your professional strengths, and then what are some of the things that, rather than called weaknesses, things that you think, you know what, these are places I can do better?
Sure, right, okay. Um, I think that, I think I'm a, I think I'm a master at compromise. I can find a compromise in almost any situation. And I think that, that helps me with my negotiating skills, and I think that's, I think that's certainly a strength. I feel like I'm a unifier. I've gone into several agencies where, you know, they're, you know, having staffing issues, and, and I think through my management style, which I'm sure you're going to ask me more about, is that, you know what, I can, I, I have, I have the ability to get people on the same page, and to go in the same direction, and more or less have the same goals. So I think that those are some, some strengths I have. Now, and I think that the hard part is, I'm really passionate about parks, I'm a homeowner, I've been doing this since ninth grade, right, and I don't see any reason to stop now. I think that if I was to think about weaknesses, I would say that, you know, and I'm not a shy person by any means, but boy, I need to, and I'm not terrible, yeah, I'm not, I'm not terrible, but I need to work on my public speaking skills, that don't, there's a part of it that, that, you know, that makes me anxious a little bit on the inside, it's not something I, I, you know, raise my hand, oh, yeah, I'll, I'll talk to about eight, two hundred people, but I do do it, and I'm, I'm okay, but I think if I was going to work on everything, that would be something that I probably should work on. Yes. And, and probably another one is filing, I'm a terrible filer, and so I, I need a little bit of help with that, especially when you have to, you know, you have to file your computer stuff, and you got to do your hard files, and, you know, I know where my stuff is, but it may not always look pretty.
Well, you'll get plenty of public speaking in this deal.
I'm sure, right?
Sorry, into the wolves. So we're moving into management style and staffing.
Yes.
Which you actually alluded to, so you were right on the money here, so. Rank the importance of the following groups, and why they would rank them in the places they would. Staff, community, user groups, and commissioners.
I think that, I think your people are everything. I think you have a good team, that the rest of it is almost worthless. And so, I would have to say that I believe staff is, is a priority, you have to take care of your people. You have to, they have to know that you care, you have to be approachable, you have to, you know, be there at good times and bad times, so you need to be their rock if they need one. Not a, so many times I've mentored people that, you know, half the conversations aren't even about work, they're about other things that are going on with their mass. We think that maybe we can separate the private life and the work life, but the private life is, is, you know, is going south. Well, you know darn well, that's probably having an effect on the work life as well. So, what can we do to take care of our people? I think that's the most important part. I think that, let's see, we have the user groups, and we have, starting very early in the list, and the, and the board, with the one more.
Community.
Yes. I think that, I think the community is next, I think that I look for when I'm, I'm working on a job, is the support of the community, I think that's important for the most part. You know, none of this would be needed if it wasn't for the, the needs of the community. And I think it's important to maintain outreach, I think it's important to be, to receive feedback, I think it's important to have an open door policy, so that when you come and talk to them, they, they, they know how to get ahold of you. And, and really, it really is, in the end, it really is for them, and that's what we're doing this for. Certainly, the, certainly I think that the, that the user groups are a subcategory of the community. When I go with the user groups, just a little bit ago, you know, I think that in the first, you know, the first ninety days or so, that the head of those user groups are some of the key people that I would need to meet with, and, and start, begin to establish relationships with, so that I understand where, you know, their current, their current needs are, where they want to go, so that we understand that we're on the same road together. How can I help you, a user group, you know? And then, I hope you're not disappointed, but I think that the board would come last, I think that, that having, having a supportive board is very important. But at the same time, I've done this job without a board before at other places, I think that, that what you do is you act as a great conduit to the committee to help that feedback coming back. And, and again, I'm very much a policies and procedures person, I think that there's a process for things. I'm by the book, I dot my i's, I cross my t's, depending on what the situation is. You know what, you're certainly involved in all of that, and, and, and I know that, that I'm, I'm, I'll be the one coming to you, you know, hey, I've got this going on, what do you think? You know, and I understand what an important sounding board you are, and the, and the information that you provide here, and how that affects the direction that we're all going to go at some point. So, there's certainly lots and lots of value there, in fact, that you volunteer your time. You know what, I, you know, I know lots of people who've been in positions like this, and, you know, I know how hard it can be for you to get out of the grocery store sometimes. So, I, I get that, and I get the commitment it takes. And it's so important, you know, everything I've got, as far as the Fargo Park District is just a huge footprint of this, of this community. And, and you're, and you're right in the middle, you get to see everything, and you get it, you know, you're driving the boat, and I think that's, I think that is commendable. And that would put you last on that list of priorities.
Complimented the board, right by that. I wrote down policy and procedures, you know, like last.
I wrote that down, too.
I wrote down least of his priorities. Describe a time when you had to confront an employee whose results were inadequate.
Well, um, probably the latest example, I've had a gal that, we have a couple of employees right now, a fairly large district, it's one of the largest ones in the state of California. It takes like three and a half hours to drive from one side to the other, and not just because you're on the coast, but because it's, it's a, it's a, it's a large area. And so, we have, we have a recreation supervisor who handles recreation services outside of Fort Bragg, and then we have a recreation supervisor who handles everything in Fort Bragg. And, and again, if you're not in Fort Bragg, and you're out there, you know, most people look at it as Fort Bragg, you can, Fort Bragg's central, we get accused of that all the time. And so, so that's the deal, but, but, but I think that we had a gal that was a, she was, for whatever reason, brought somebody in performing, wanted to save some money, they, they, they put her in as a rec coordinator, maybe she shouldn't have been a rec coordinator, she certainly was involved in that, she was a supervisor. And so, I was able to, to write a job description, get the money passed, we moved her to this, one thing was even just this last summer, we moved her to a supervisor position. You know what, she, she earned it, she, that's what she does. And so, with that, it becomes an exempt status instead of hourly, so it actually made things easier for us to accomplish some of the things that we needed to do. I don't know what happened, okay, I don't know what happened, but that break was probably the worst thing that ever happened to us, and possibly this, this woman, because, you know, things just went downhill after that. She, she left her boyfriend twenty years, she, you know, she, she, her, her performance at work started to just slide, and it was, and, you know, and it was, it was going along for a while, you tried to intervene, you tried to find out what the problem is, and you know what, we're, we're getting, we're getting a lot of lip service, so, you know, the staff were saying a different story, and they were saying that your stuff is on the decline. And, you know what, again, because I really feel that I really try to support the people, I thought, you know, we're going to try and work through this. You know, we know that maybe it's just, she's having a personal time, and, you know, it's, it's going on to the work life, but that wasn't the case, it never did get better. And, and I, I, I'm sorry to say this, but, you know what, but for the most part, I feel that I can turn people around. And sometimes what happens is, and maybe it's another weakness, okay, that I give people too much rope. I do, and, and because I think that they can turn, and when they don't, you know what, I'm, I'm surprised. It's like, well, you couldn't get that one back on the road. But, you know, I know now that some people you just can't say, no matter what you do. And, and so, she ended up, she ended up actually resigning, and we've since replaced her with somebody who really has their, has their head in the game, is doing great stuff, but it's never an easy thing. And we, we tried to play by the numbers, you know, my, my board knew, my HR gal knew, and, you know, we were all trying to provide as much support we could get, but to no avail. And unfortunately for us, she, she decided to go a different direction, which really was probably best for her and us. But that's, that's not the first time, that's the latest one. Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry, Jerry, before you jump on, what kind of time span was this, when you first said, you know what, we're going to do something, this lady can do more?
Sure.
To when it ended?
I was, I would say it was about four and a half months, five months. And, and then, you know, at one point in the staff meeting, she said, oh, by the way, I'm resigning, and it kind of surprised us all. I was starting to be with her on a weekly basis to go over things, and to look at her work plans, and, you know what, I, I, I still, I just wondered if I wouldn't be able to have raised, and what, what would happen, it enabled her to make some decisions that she might not have otherwise made. You know, whether I was a catalyst or not, I don't know, but the timing sure was close to that.
So, so let's settle on that a bit, let's talk about your hiring philosophy, do you promote from within, do you hire externally, and why?
Sure. I think that, I always try to hire within whenever possible, I think that that says a lot to the rest of the team, it gives them motivation to move, work hard, and strive to be the very best, knowing that there's, there's potential movement. You know, we have a very, we have a very small human resource base where I am, because we're solo. And, and so, I haven't, yet had to hire outside yet, and I feel very lucky. But what we try to do is, we try to, we develop our succession plans, so that we, we lead and train it as much as possible for those folks that are, that are maybe juniors and the worker bees, you know, and we talk about succession in our, in our annual performance evaluations. And so, we try to grow our own, if you will. And so far, we've been fortunate, and I think that there's going to be some movement at one of the top jobs here in the next year or so, and we're ready to fill that from within, from within. And I think that, I think, not only does the staff appreciate that, but I certainly think that the community does as well.
Don't just take it, say, Ryan, he's on the outside. Okay. Just to kind of piggyback, I know you described your resume, and that it looks like you kind of jump around a little bit, so you said you gave us your side of that. What would current or biggest direct reports say about your management style, leadership style, and, and your practices?
I'm sorry, who, I didn't get that first word.
Your direct reports.
Oh, okay. Good question. I think that probably one of my direct reports right now is really happy for me, because she's having some problems, and, but, you know what, we're working through those. I think, I think for the most part, my direct reports would, would be, would be positive. Again, I think that the things that we've done, we've addressed a lot, a lot of the wage questions as much as we can at this point, we've started a retirement program, we try to send people to, to school and training when possible. When we make decisions, when possible, because I'd like to manage by consensus, when I can, and, and that we know that, that everybody in the organization is important, everybody has something important to add, and I, and I get that. And so, I think that, that people know that they, that it's a team, it's a, a part of the decision that can cross us. And I can't take it, there have been plenty of times where, where they have all felt one way, I felt another, and I conceded, because, because it was the right thing to do. And in the end, you know what, it was the right thing for me to listen to them and take their advice. Again, you know, I haven't been there a long time, a lot of those people are third and fourth generation folks, they certainly know that community far better than I do. And, and so, I, I think that's really important, that, that they have some say in how things move forward, and in their future, and so, we try to do that whenever possible. Again, sometimes it's not possible, sometimes there are emergencies, and sometimes there are things that are unexpected, and you have to make command decisions at that time. But again, when possible, I manage by consensus, and, and I have an open door policy. What does that mean to me? That means that you don't have to have a point to them, certainly I hope it's going to take more than fifteen minutes, that we plan in advance a little bit, because we're busy. But, you know what, I, I, I try to, I try to be as approachable as possible at all the times, and not the scary director, you know, in the corner of the building. So, I, I think that's extremely important, and, you know what, I do, I get, you know, I get the, you know, I get, I get, I think that most people can come in and talk to me whenever they need to, most anything, I think that is, is really, really, really important. So I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
I'm going to expand on Jerry's question a little bit, where, and I know you didn't say that it's exclusively hiring from within, or primarily hiring from within. How do you keep an organization, whether it's where you are right now or any of the other ones, how do you keep ideas new, fresh, if you're basically just hiring people from within, and nothing's really coming from the outside?
Sure. You know what, well, again, I'm a strong advocate of training, keeping up on certificates and licenses and so forth. And so, you know what, we go to state conferences, we go to national conferences, we network with other cities and districts, you know, throughout the state, and much farther, and so, and so, you know what, that's where a lot of the good idea, we go, what are you doing, how are you handling this? Oh, we're doing this way. You know, they bring it back, they bring it back with the beehive, if you will, and we, we, we meet on a regular basis, we disseminate that information, and we try to utilize whatever, whatever we can. And so, so I think, again, that the training and the participation at conferences is really important. I think that also that, that you can still do research, you know, on the internet, is certainly valuable. I think that, that we're, I think that everything should be under review at all times, how can we do this better? And, and I think that one of the, one of the things that aggravates me the most when I go into places, well, this is the way we go, is that, really? Okay, have you thought about anything else? Have you tried any other methods? And so, to have an open mind about, about how to, how to provide a better service, or to make things more efficient, I think is extremely important, and I, I push that, I do, I push that. I, I actually want to sense when I go to those staff meetings, you know, tell me, I want you to tell me if you don't agree with me, I want to hear that. And, and I think it's only through that kind of dialogue, that you can really come to some sort of a, a true idea about where you want to move forward. And I don't expect everybody to fall in line, and ultimately, you know, that it's the board that makes the final decision, but, but I think it's important to have those compositions.
Okay, thank you. So you talked a little bit about public speaking. So you talked a little bit about public speaking, and the question is, just in the media, what's been your exposure to the media? Interviews, questions, criticisms?
All that. You know, again, I've worked in a variety of places. I've done, you know, broadcast interviews out in the field. I don't know if it's time to open up, but we have put a new light in the field in Idaho Falls. Sharon, out in Maine, we're gonna have a grand opening, a huge windstorm came in. I'm out there being interviewed, my airs, my clothes, my air flying back, gray dust is flying everywhere, and we're trying to have this interview about, you know, these great light system that we got in. So, you know, that's just one example. I've, you know, I've written articles for, you know, for publication on a regular basis. I've gone on the radio, pre-recorded spots. I, that even now, I meet after a real parkour meeting, I meet with one of the local radio station jocks, and we talk about, well, what happened to the parkour last night, so he can get it on the air. I do press releases. You know, we're close with our marketing group to get the information out that we need. And so I get the value of not only the local media and through our promotion and marketing, and certainly I understand the value of social media, which is becoming more and more of them. And so, you know, I, for us, you know, we, we're dealing with Facebook, and you know, right now, we've got a Facebook presence online, we're moving to probably at Twitter. And, you know, every time you're on, there's a new platform that people are doing. So it's tough to keep up, and I understand the importance. And let's also make the circuit of service clubs. I think that's important to hit each one of those, at least on an annual basis, talk about what your plans are, you know, how things are going, so and so forth. You know, a lot of those folks have, you know, have prominent members of your community that participate in those, and it's a great way to get the message across. And, yeah, I hope that answers your question. I think I've been exposed to just about everything.
Right, thanks.
All right. How do you see the organization changing the next two years, and how do you see yourself leading slash creating that change? How do you handle and embrace change? Give us, give any relevant examples.
Sure. Well, I don't believe in change for the sake of change, okay? I think there has to be a reasoning and justification behind it. I think that you need to make sure that before you implement that change, that you have to understand what the consequences are going to be before you make that change. You know, and I think a personal example, in Lake Havasu City, they decided that, they decided that they couldn't give away free services anymore. There were certain groups that were getting free stuff, free facility for meetings and so forth. Well, it was my job, because I was made on high, that decision, okay? And so what my job at that point was, you know, sit down and say, Dan, you need to cover these organizations, so they don't get free stuff anymore. Well, I'll tell you what, I had a, one of the groups that was getting stuff for free was a grieving widows group. No, it wasn't that, it was even worse, it was for children that had died. And I had to talk to these mothers and, you know, essentially, you know, tell them that, by the way, you know what, we can't do this for you anymore. And that was, that was heart wrenching. And I can't help but think that although I get the legal implications and why the decision was made, I really don't think that, I think we could have done our research a little bit better before we moved forward, because that was extremely painful. And it wasn't just that, but I think that, that again, when you manage by consensus, you try to get everybody on board, so that everybody understands why and what. And so that way, when it's moved forward, it's just really a lot easier for not only the staff, but also the community as well, so that you can manage expectations. And so, again, so much of this, so much of, it just comes down to communication. Every conference I've been to or retreat, you know, where you do a, the organization goes in and you do, you know, self-analysis, it always comes back to communication. It seems to. And so I think that you really can never have enough, and you can't overdo it. And so that's one of the things I strive for.
So did you, did you start charging them, or did you just tell them?
Yeah, we started charging them.
Oh, okay. So whereas they totally couldn't come there anymore, because?
Oh, yeah, I know, we just had to assess them fees. Well, that was the worst part, because what happens is that some of the groups then, you know, have friends on the city council, and they got stuff for free again. And so, just like, really, wow. So I think a consistent approach is really important. Once you make up your mind, you know, let's stay on track for a while. And you know, what's the message that you're sending now to your staff, but also to the community in general? You know, transparency for me is so important in a government organization. I think if that, if you're tough, you know, you go through a rough patch, that's the time to become even more transparent. And, you know, so we strive for that.
I apologize, I skipped a little second.
That's all right.
I kept trying to answer a question in this section.
It keeps me on my toes.
I went to four. I should have been in three.
That's all right. Do you want to go to three or some question?
It's kind of a rule breaker. We only answer a lot of three.
Now you know who you, now you know who the difficult one is.
We're, because I don't really even.
Do you want to go back and, we could do three, we'll finish three, and then we'll go back and skip you.
We could do that.
Or however you want to do it.
Sure. Let's do that. I apologize.
I forgot four, too.
I do this, you're doing a lot of tries.
Yes, I did a lot of three.
Well, mostly because I was daydreaming about Lake Havasu, because I just came back last Monday, and then I leave again in two weeks because my dad's down there. That would be a challenge. My dad, when we drive around, my dad said, he sees a little kid, where does that kid play? There's no grass. You know, because I grew up on a farm.
Sure.
And I said, well, there's that park. He said, yeah, well, they have to walk three miles to get to the park. How's that little kid gonna get to the park? And I, it would be a challenging environment because it's a resort town.
Right.
So I was daydreaming, I apologize. Back to section three. All right. Give us an example of a strategic, strategic vision that you authored. How did you go about executing the vision, and what was the outcome of the process?
We went through this process, and again, it was never I or me, as a team, went through this at, probably about, after about a year or so, I'd been in Alaska. And it was, it was on a specific topic, not just general, you know, the department of the agency, but it was a way to, because they wanted to, they wanted to, the borough was going to take on the responsibility of building a series of wayside rest stops from, you know, the end of Wasilla up to the mountain of Kennedy, essentially, because there's a lot of these great spots that people were staying at, but because there wasn't the right facilities, there was toilets or bathrooms, you know, who knows what, and it was, the areas were pretty depleted. And so, and so we, you know what, it was a twin color eye, and we had to understand, you know, well, what resources do we have? What is, what is our goal? You know, and what timelines are involved, and who's going to participate? So to take our resources and, you know, then try to accomplish the mission was, you know, was, I think that, you know, actually, they, we had implemented the plan, but I had left before the, before the, before they actually started doing the physical construction of those sites. But it was fairly ambitious, and of course, there wasn't any revenue attached to it, it was going to be just, you know, free for anybody that went through it, because it was saving parts of our environment to a certain extent. And so that was the last time, and I, to a certain extent, we're starting that now, where I am. I think it is extremely important to have that, and we're doing that right now by doing a thorough job of our asset management plan. We're, I get it, we're close to the end, and I think that would be a vital part of determining where we're going to go from here.
Thank you.
Yeah. You talked a little bit about board structure, and this might be a multiple point question depending upon your answers, but can you explain your current structure now that you report to a city manager, and then there's a board above you? What, how does that, what's that structure look like right now?
Sure. Well, it's a little interesting, because essentially, I've worked for, I've worked for a group, just like you, you're a five, five, a five board member elected. And what happens is that when they, when they first built our facility ten years ago, they didn't ask the right questions. They definitely have, it wasn't the plan that was put in the process, so when they built it, they were able to operate it only a short period of time, but they realized that this is going to cost a lot more money to operate than we thought. And so what happens, and this is all before my time, this is the story, okay? And so they closed it down, this twenty-five-hundred-dollar facility is closed down, and what was Shane? And so what happened is that the city had to come on board, the development of transit tax, it was a half-set tax, you know, that only paid by, you know, by folks that were listening. And that was enough to, to take care of the shortfall in the operation and maintenance budget. And so the deal that was made before I got there was that the land in the building, it used to be owned by the district, it wasn't going to be owned by the district anymore, it was going to be owned by the city. And then they would, they would put in, what, I think eight hundred thousand dollars worth of, you know, transit funds into our, well, they still maintain it, and we have to, we have to ask them for that. But, and then forty-five percent of our district revenue, we also have to give to the city. And so it really changed the ballgame to a huge degree, and that also led to, you know, less things or programs that we could do beyond Fort Bragg. And so that didn't, that caused a lot of heartaches as well, because then when those services started to diminish, we're already Fort Bragg center, now you're going to even do less for us, and we're giving you money for what? And so, and so, so there's the type. So what happens is with capital improvement, capital improvement projects, we, what we do is we go through staff, develop plans, we present to our park board, and then we take that recommendation to the park board, not in everything, but show, you know, certain things, and we have to take it to the city. For example, like the operation of the C D Star Community Center has to be approved by our park board and the city council. And so it's, you know, that if I'm trying to get through the end of that, you have been put through the wringer. You know, you dotted out your i's, you crossed your t's. And I can proudly say that the last two years, that, and you have to go through that vetting process, if you will, that I haven't had one budget put back to me with any changes yet. So we listen very well, we understand what they want, we try to give them what they want in advance, so that, you know, they don't have to question what we're doing, they don't have concerns, so. But I don't work for the city, we're partners, and out each other, you know, people move to Fort Bragg because of, because of our programs and our facilities. And so we understand that, you know, we're kind of a shining light on the hill to a certain extent, and we, and we understand the impact that has on tourism as well as the local population and how important that is. But you couldn't do without the city. And we work hand in hand on all the capital improvement projects, fifty thousand dollars or more. Everything else below that, we handle, we take care of.
So is your board elected, or are they appointed?
Our board is elected, yes sir.
Okay. So along those lines, how would you respond to commissioners who are making promises with end users without staff knowledge or commissioners? Who are directing subordinate staff without your knowledge?
So we have two things here. We have, we have commissioners making promises without outside consultation, is that correct?
Yes.
And we also have the second component, which is, is that, was that the, is that it?
Well, it's commissioners making promises to people in the community, like, yeah, don't worry, we'll fund that, or our staff will take care of that.
Sure.
And then the second part is, or commissioners who are directing subordinate staff without your knowledge. So in other words, after we, I promised it to the baseball group that I went to the facilities guy and told him to go take care of that baseball career.
Well, I have some personal feelings on this, because I, of course, I mean, when you do this, I know that's going to happen. And I have had people up at our boards or commissions that, you know, have done that or the same thing. And so I would say that the first thing is that, that what you folks do is you hire executive director. He's the person that works for you, and everybody else works for the executive director. And again, I'm a policies and procedures person, I play by the book, and I can't help but think that, you know, that that chain of command is really, really important in order to, you know, to both to manage expectations for one thing, but it's certainly, and I think, let me clarify, okay? I think it's important that commissioners or board members be able to talk to these people. I'm not saying that. I think that education in order to make, you know, decisions is really important, have as much information as possible. But when you're providing direction, that's a different story, and I think that there's, that a line gets crossed there. Particularly if, particularly if, you know, I don't know if you're talking to the director or not, you know, but you might say, well, can I just, you know, go and talk? Sure, beat us. But again, the direction is, I've just seen that abused in the past. And it's not pretty generally, it's usually for, you know, for, you know, personal reasons, for personal opinion. I don't think there's any place for that in government service, I just don't, I'm saying that that's the only motivation, but, you know, why give them an opportunity to go there if you don't really have to? And so the other part about making promises, that's a tough one, because, you know, that's a, I would only hope at that point that the other board members would recognize that that's happening, and kind of, you know, take care of yourselves to a certain extent. I mean, certainly, I would, I would, again, I'm not shy, I would say, you know, could we have handled this a different way? You know, because now we're left holding a bag that we can't put anything in. And so, you know, that's all I would say, is that if you're, you're going to go out there, you know, make sure that we can come through, make sure that we can manage those expectations, when, you know, when that's been set up like that. So, you know, don't set us up for fail. That's, that's all I have to say about that really.
Right. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, you said something, and I wanted to write down that quote, because that was kind of cool, the hope in a bag, we don't have anything to put in. Is that what you said?
I just made that up, right?
Well, I don't care, it's good. No, if you make more of those, that's good, too. So you'll find yourself at an event or an outing, or might even be one of our things in the community. What's your strategy on working in the room? Who do you talk to? Who do you focus on? Who do you not focus on?
Sure. Well, again, you only have so much time. I think it depends on the event. I think especially after somebody is in place longer, that is probably easier to do that. But I certainly would use that as an opportunity to, to introduce myself and begin to establish a relationship with the key folks in the community. Again, heads of user groups, the editor of the local newspaper, folks that are in the city council, you know, the top senior staff of the city, you know, the people that I think that we would interact with in order to work together to get things done, I think, you know, are the primary folks. But certainly, I'm always, if somebody came up, maybe, you know, it's not going to, like, I'm not going to talk to them because they're not the chief of something, someplace. Now, that doesn't, that's not how it works, but I think if you have limited time and you're working the room, as you say, that, and again, it depends on what projects you own, maybe that you need to talk to somebody because you've got something that's going to happen next week, and you want to try to make sure you solidify the information. So again, I think there's a lot of things that factor into this, but certainly, I think that is primarily directed at those folks that are part of your working hemisphere, you know, that you work together in order to accomplish goals and fulfill the mission.
Thank you. Oh, no, probably me again, if we go on to Stacey's category, I'll pass. Oh, where are we here? Let's see. So, so I think you even mentioned this about, something about the first six months, but what do you think your top priorities would be, or what's your plan as far as, you know, this is what I'm going to try and get done the first month I'm here, this is what I'm going to get done after three months, this is what I'm going to get done after six months?
Sure. I think what's going to happen, especially here, where there's really so much going on, that it'd be important to identify, well, what needs to be done next? What has to be done tomorrow? And understand what, what is going on the ground right now, and where, where the district are, is, excuse me, is, in those processes. Like, you know, for example, the cool deal down with Project Nine, is that Block Nine? Project Nine? You know, I know that's coming right around the corner, you've got, you know, you've got, you've got your, you've got your sports complex that, you know, isn't too far away. So what are all the priorities that are existing right now? And then figure out how to put those in, you know, into, into the batting order, if you will. But certainly, easily to imagine that you're going to hit, need to hit the ground running very hard here, because there's so much happening. ground, running very hard here, because there's so much happening, and, and I'm, you know, and I know that you're in the interim process, and you've got to get a little bit about maybe what's happened in the last year here or so. And so, and so, I think that would be really important, especially with the project component. You know, I, I think that, I think that the folks that are, that are, that are heads, that are your department heads, I'd either start spending time with those folks, you know, you know, going out to the field and seeing what they look like, visiting the parks. So you can get an assessment about where you are right now, I think that's extremely important, so. You've got, you know, those are the stuff I would do now, work on those projects and figure out where they need to go, and, but certainly developing the relationships and understanding the history, and, and where you need to be tomorrow is really the top priority. And I know that, I, I already, you know, I already have a good idea that it would be just one of you be sprinting here, because you have so much going on, which is one of the things that attracts me to this.
Thank you.
Just give me a second here. Okay. So, have you had experience with natural disasters, like flooding, blizzards, three times as much snow at this point in the year than we're typically used to having?
Sure.
Please describe your reaction to actions and communication plans.
Well, I think a, a good example that you can all associate with, and when I was in Bragg, and what, what, what summer earlier, whatever it was, you know, we, we pretty much lost half of the town. The National Guard came in, and that was quite an experience, and we lost neighbors on all sides. You know, we weren't doing very many recreation programs at that time, in fact, all staff were doing, you know, I remember I was selling sandbags for days on end, you know, to make sure that people had the tools and equipment in order to, to fight the flood. And so, it wasn't about parks and recreation, it was about surviving and maintaining the integrity of your town. And so, I think that a lot of times, the regular stuff simply just goes out the window, and you're busy trying to keep your head above water, and that's the important part. And, and so, I think when that happens, that, you know, part of the emergency management response, you know, includes a communication component. And so, and so, the messages that you have from a recreation standpoint certainly should be included in those, that, again, you're managing expectations. But, if you get to that point, I think everybody understands what the issues are. I, I have to say that right now, we're going through a kind of emergency prep phase, and where I am right now, you, I'm sure you've heard about the horrendous fires we've had. Well, that's not very vulnerable, though, we are. And so, but, so I'm in this group now, and we're, we're looking at all that, we're looking at our emergency response, and we're looking at the communication, we're looking at how we're, you know, we're going to survive the first twenty-four hours, and, you know, and the week after that. And, and one of the things I'm just surprised at, because it's like a, you know, table full of, you know, community leaders, and what I'm realizing is that they don't have a plan. It's like, what? And what, you should know what your part is, because I'm sure that there's a plan developed. Well, there's no plan. And, and, you know, what to thought about being in, in Fort Bragg during an earthquake, you know, and the three roads that go up, and all had bridges, and being trapped, or probably beats on end, is, is a reality. And, and certainly, I'm not sure if there's, I've been in Forest Fire there a long time, but what I get is the importance of, of planning and having the, the community leaders all on one page about how we're going to react, and how we're going to work together to get through this. And I think that we're doing that now, it's a little wake-up call, and we're going to continue to work really hard at that as long as I'm there.
I got the next question, and I'm going to frame it with, you've got a lot of long-term senior leaders in this organization, and you used the phrase at one point, "That's not the way we've done it," okay? And I want to set that as a backdrop, because I want to know what's the next big things coming up in parks and recreation? What are, what should we be thinking about and looking at into the future? And then, how do you motivate that? And how, and how are you going to bring that back and get everybody on board saying, "My God, if we're not into blah, 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 you know, we're going to miss the boat here, there's some coming right down, the trend's coming right at us, we've got to go."
Sure.
What, what are those things? What, what's, where do you see parks and recreation going?
Well, I think that, I think we gleaned a lot from the conversation I've had this morning, and, you know, I can say this, pretty honest, I've gone through your brochures, I, I know they have seventy special events and a thousand programs, and, you know, my question is, what is it that you don't do? Because it's really tremendous package that you have with the community, and I think they're really fortunate to have those services available to them. And so, and so, yeah, there are lesser trends, like, you know, we had a conversation this morning about, I think when I was at the Sports Plus building, is that?
Of course.
Sports Plus?
Yes, thank you. And, you know, I got, I got to see all the tennis courts, and the question came up, well, pickleball, when I was in Arizona, pickleball was like the thing, and you couldn't convert courts fast enough, but when you did that, then you were ticking off the tennis people, like, you're having rivalries, and it was, you know, it was, there was some conflict. And so, you know, that's just a, a minor example. I, I can't help but think here that, that you're, you're really on the ball, you really are, your, your folks are great, and it seems that they're, they, they look at the trends and they know what they are. And I, I think that, that here seems that, that, that really what's needed is that, is that, is that strategic planning portion, that, that vision about, about, you know, where are we going to be in ten years, and how are we going to do it? What resources are we going to, you know, need in order to move forward and accomplish those goals? I, what I see is that, and it's not really unusual here or any other place, but generally, especially with the, with the maintenance component, there's always, seems to be always more stuff to do than there are resources. And so, what, what level of, what level of service do you want to provide? What's it going to take to get there? And so that, when we, and if you do have continued growth in your city, and, and, and more parks are built, that, you know what, that, that you, you don't get behind, that service level doesn't drop. I'm a firm advocate of, we have to be able to take care of the stuff that we have firmly, and surely, before we can build new stuff. And when we build new stuff, we have to ask the question, how are we going to maintain and operate this? And if you don't have a plan, you should really think twice about doing that. And so, I'm, I'm fiscally conservative, I believe in strong, healthy reserves, you know, I've seen the bottom drop out before, and, and I think that really to, to look ahead and, and to have that plan is, is, is really, is, is really something to eyesee, that this, this district probably could do a better job at. And I'm hearing that, I'm not making this up, I'm hearing that from, from your staff, and that, that's what they're saying, and so, and, and I'm seeing that, and I've realized that.
So, it's like you have a strong aquatics background, I don't know if you're familiar with Island Park, or if you went by Island Park?
I haven't heard of seeing any parks, and I haven't been here in like ten years, so, so I really, I've, I've ran a couple of dillies, but that's about it. I've read about it, I've shown it, I'm one of the first parks you had, and, and all that, right?
Like, large park downtown, but maybe there's an aging swimming pool.
Forty years old, is that correct?
Yes. Right. Starting to tip a little bit, a few inches out, so...
So, trying to level the water, you know, it doesn't really work, okay?
So, what, I mean, would you have any strategies on going in, doing something different? Just realizing, I mean, do we still need a lap pool and a diving well and a wading pool?
Sure.
And how would you tackle something like that? Maybe you have some ideas with your aquatics background?
Sure, you're right, I did come up with an aquatics, did almost every job that you can think of in aquatics, and, and so, you know, the trends have changed, you know, again, I don't know what your pool looks like on there, so I can't say exactly how it'll change it, but I do know that I would have come up with a plan, probably, you know, before the facility got to the twenty-five year mark, because I think about twenty-five years, that's when we really start to have problems structurally with almost any facility that you have. And so, again, I'm a, I'm a firm believer in long-term planning, to, to try to understand what's ahead of you, and try to have resources to address it when you get to that point. But we haven't done that, and we are starting from scratch. I think that it's like, okay, well, let's identify, let's identify the folks that have the most interest in what this project might be like. What are, who are the groups? Who are the, who are maybe the personalities? And I would, I would have focus groups, I would get feedback about what they would see. It's not about me, it's not about the staff, it's about what does the community want? And so, to have, to have, you know, to have meetings where you're getting that feedback, and maybe what you do is you start with a couple of, you know, conceptual designs, and you have people comment about it, you know, based on, based on national trends that are occurring now, whether it's water slides, or zero depth entries, or, you know, or who knows what, there's lots of things. But, but certainly, to, to get that feedback from the community, not only to, to understand what direction you want to go, but so that when you, when you get to the place that you finally want to be, it's what they want. Because I've seen, at Habsburg, like, they were getting pickleball pressure to, to put more courts, because the pickleball people didn't want the courts built when they were finally built, they wanted to be someplace else. And that in itself was a real battle. Well, why did that happen? Where was the disconnect? How could we, how could we have done our outreach better in order to, in order to understand that? And so that when we built it, that they then not get used as much as maybe they could have been. I just think that, you know, we're, we're stewards of taxpayers' dollars, and we need to, we need to, we need to spend it wisely whenever possible.
Great transition, because the next category is budget funding.
Perfect.
So, now, steal this question, I know Steve knows this one, but, so roughly, if our budgets, they're one million, give or take, I don't know if you dug into it, I'm not going to risk about that.
I have a, yes.
But roughly eighty percent is publicly funded, state, local, federal, twenty percent is private through user groups, you know, fees, that type of thing. If we went to challenge you and say, "Well, we want to depend less on public funding and give more on the private side," how would you go about it in that?
Well, that'd be a long conversation, and, and I know that whenever you raise fees on the user groups, there's always pushback. I remember just one silly example, I was in Bragg, actually, and, and the security component of doing an open gym program sets up, you need to have two people. But we're formed into just one, the program's a budget for just one, so, I mean, again, really simple example, but when we wanted to have two, because of those issues that were occurring, we had to raise from, from zero to fifty cents. You thought that I would have, like, violated the Ten Commandments? And so, and so, and so, again, how could I have done that better? You know what, I could have, I could have done more outreach, for example. I think what happens is that, 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 again, that the relationships, the partnerships that you have, that you have to bring in, you have to have those, those tough discussions, and you, and you, and you have to, you know, you have to show them what's down the road if you don't make changes. And you have to get that feedback, so that when you get ready to do it, as many people and groups are on the board as possible. To, to make unilateral decisions in the ivory tower simply doesn't work very well in public service, and, and I get that. So, you know, so, you know, that would be the strategy, what the outcome would be, you know, you never quite know what that's going to be, sometimes you're simply forced to do it anyway. But, I, I think that in every organization I've ever been in, that when you get to part of the budget development process, where you're looking at fees in order to figure out a balance, you know, in the books, you know what, that, it always takes lots of time, lots of consideration. Timing is huge, you want to give people at least, you know, six months in advance, and need time if you can, you know, how can we make it easier for them to make adjustments? What, what they need to do different in order to, in order to be able to provide the fees that you're actually having? Right? But, at the same time, you have to show them that, well, if you don't do this, here's the possibilities. And it could be the demise of their facility, or, you know, who knows what, but, but, you know, what's, what's valuable, you know, understand what's valuable to them, what motivates them, and then, and then try to put the big picture out there, so that you're all way on the same page. And it's not always successful, but, you know, I think that's a decent approach.
So, you have experience running large facilities, and have come in on some that are, you weren't there in the beginning, so there are mistakes made initially.
Sure.
So, we're in the development stage of building one of these new sports complexes. And, you know, we're in the developing and fundraising stage, because we want this to be sustainable, to serve our public.
Sure.
And to not require any more public funding, if possible. Can you tell us what your plan would be for fundraising, and what you think that would look like in communicating it with the public?
Well, so, that's a, that's a really good question, and I think that, that again, that, we're not going to think this by ourselves, this is a, I can only imagine all the partnerships that, that you either have or that are, are going to be possible. And I think that you have to look at it as a multi-partnership analysis of, of what's going to happen, and what the expectations are going to be. And so, you know, as far as fundraising, you know, what I get right now is a sixty-million-dollar project, you've got about forty million on that, that's, that's what I, that's what I gleaned at this point, I don't know if that's correct or not. I think that you have, the fact that you have a foundation is a tremendous step, and, and really, it's, it's, it's a, it's really a rare thing, I think, for, for a park and park departments to have that. So, for you to have that, I think that you should feel extremely fortunate that you've got that, that fundraising arm to a certain extent. And that, that's, you know what, that's what I would, that's what I would do if you didn't have it. I'd say, "Well, you know what, we probably need to develop a foundation, figure out, you know, how to, how to identify what our capital needs are, and then, and then, you know, then all work that these people do would be, would be for that end goal."
Thank you.
So, how do you balance operational requirements versus new projects and services? Because, in a lot of ways, it's, it's a lot easier to take some money and find something new than it would be to repair a parking lot.
You know, I think being parks and recreational, we often discover ourselves as the redheaded, stiff children of the family, that, you know, that usually they're underfunded to a certain extent, the, you know, fire department, police usually get the, the bulk of, of the funds, just because of the optics and, you know, the fact that they do what they do. So, I'm, I'm personally used to working on a shoestring budget, you know, using, and I'm giving you super simple here, you know, duct tape and glue. And, and so, and so, when, I think that what that does is, is that it makes us more efficient in the way we use our resources when you're under that, that financial pressure, you know, almost all the time, I, I think. And so, and so, I think that helps in order to, you know, in order to, to do what you need to, in order to provide the highest quality program or service that you can, is to have that outlook. I don't ever take anything for granted, and I certainly manage my expectations, because I get it now, because I'm going to get it next time, I get that. But again, the word sustainability comes up, and, and when we look to, you know, to, you know, to, to buy something, you know what, you know, if I could repair it, you know, and, and, you know, it's like having a car, if you've got to spend more to repair it, but the value of the car, well, you should be getting the car. But if you can repair it, and it's still usable, and it's still fun and has sound, you know, for, for a fraction of that, then how do we do that too? So I'm always looking at trying to make things last, or last longer than, you know, as, as long as they can, and to try to, to try to take things to the end of their life cycle as much as possible, only because that's been it for just years and years in almost every agency that I've ever been at. So, let's make sure that we just run this thing to the tenth degree before we even consider having to get a replacement. I, I hope that is your question.
So describe to us, please, your, your current planning and executing of your budget in your current role, or current job. So, so how do you start the process of going about putting your budget together? Who do you take that budget to? You know, it has to be approved?
Sure.
That, I mean, to, to the point where it now becomes your budget for the year?
First of all, we have a, we have a June to July, excuse me, a July and June cycle. So, actually, I had contacted the city just last week, talked to the CFO, and said, "Do you, because our, our budgets between the city and ours are intertwined on, on one level, we have two pots of money, we have, um, our P E funds, district funds, and then we have the C D Star funds, which is managed by the city but used by us." And so, according to the, the budget development process, I have to find out what their plan is first, but what I called them, they weren't even there yet. And so, I felt, I have to say, I felt pretty good about that. And, so, it says we need to run it in a couple weeks, so certainly by February, the, the plan is, is that we need to have a budget schedule first of all, a budget calendar. And so, that's what we do, first, we put the budget calendar out, and we put it out there, so everybody understands what we need to do and what the expectations are. What we do then is we, we begin to, to look at, at, at the potential changes in these, we call, or you tell the companies we call, the city, talk about, you know, what they're going to charge for water, and just ascertain that, is there anything higher, higher, you know, rates and, and rate hikes in the next year or so that we need to know about? So that we get that idea, so that we have, we don't have every director making those same phone calls, it's all centralized. So then, based on that, we develop our budget worksheets, and the only thing that we don't give our directors at this point, at, at that point in the process, is, is the information regarding staffing costs, because we do that last, based on everything else. And so, we develop our budget sheets, our worksheets, again, we, we give out to our directors, and they've got so much time to, to, you know, to, to get those done, and they got so much time to, to, you know, to get those done, the preliminary budget reports, if you will, of course, they work with their staff, so and so forth. But when we get it, the whole news, we meet with the departments, and one-on-one with our finance people, and we go through every single line item, and we tear that thing apart, and we ask for justification, and we, we, if you know this, we're looking for huge spies either way, and say, well, you're not spending years' money last year, and how come? Or what changed? Or you're gonna spend, you're gonna need a lot more this year, what are you gonna do different? And so, that, we're, you know, I don't say, I don't say this one, well, you're only gonna have, you can only ask for two percent of all your operations more than you did this year. What I do is, I, it's a little more freestyle, is that they, they're able to ask for the sun, the moon, the stars person, in that, in that, in that review process, we, we, we pull it back, okay? So, that's just the first time. So, once we go through all the department budgets, then what we do is we, we put it together, and of course, we're talking about revenue management expenditures, I, we, there's only two, three of us that actually work on the capital project, is primarily myself and the, our finance director, and then the head of our operations department, there's nobody else who has, you know, a, you know, really a real claim, actually, when it comes to anything over fifty thousand dollars. And so, and so, at that point, what we do is we say, well, okay, well, where's the balance at? We've all that together, this is the, this is the high end. And so, what we do is we say, well, we're over, we're short, we then come back, and the hard part, we, you know, we call it cut slash meeting, right? We're really getting down to balance a budget, and I never turn in a budget that is not balanced, I never turn in something that, you know, that we can't afford. And so, so, once we do the cut slash, you know, it's a painful process, but we do it, but we try to make it, we're sure that everybody feels the pain equally, as much as possible. And then, and it's around that point too, that we understand that, you know, we've got our utilities paid for, we know what things that we have to repair, and those, and then what we do is we look at our, what can we do for our employees after that? And so, we always try to do the best that we can, it's always negotiable to a certain extent. Last year, we did pretty well, we got eighty percent rates, I've never gotten eighty percent rates before, I thought it was tremendous without, I was against that, by the way, only because we hadn't seen a five-year projection yet, and I'm still nervous about what lies ahead, but, okay, we did it anyway. And so, so, we're living with that, people are happy. So, what happens after that is that, then we take it to our finance committee, and then we run it through all again, and they dissect it, and they ask questions, and we have to justify it. Once we're there, then the CB Star portion then has to go to the, it has to go to the city. I forgot one step, before, before we take it to our board, you know, our finance committee, I meet with the city and their department heads, and so that I show them what our preliminary budget is, so that they're okay with it too, before I even take it to the review process, so that I know that we're in sync about where we need to go. So, once we do that, then, then the full board gives approval based on the finance committee's recommendation, and then we send it to the city council. And then, they have, they, they have to, they have to look at it twice for final approval, and that generally gets done in May. For us, we actually have two budget processes, we have a mid-year, and then we have an annual budget. Our mid-year is a chance for us to, you know, maybe, maybe some things broke that we didn't expect, you know, that caused, that caused some concern and a lot about, maybe we didn't spend as much on utilities. We can take that opportunity to, to maybe shift funds around at that point. And then, but right after we're down to mid-year, then we go right into our annual budget, our manual budget generally ends up, you know, by the, by the end of April, the first part of May, for sure, so that when we go into the first year, that, you know, that we're big deal, and the budget is authorized.
So, is your current budget right around 2.5 million?
Yeah, so, well, both budgets together is about 2.2, so not really, not, not very great.
So, do you, does your park board have the authority to tax, or does that all fall on the city to determine what the tax is?
No, they, they have, they have the authority to tax, we haven't, we haven't, especially with the things, the way they are, we wouldn't go down that road, you know, but if they wanted to, they certainly could. And of course, what we do is we have to work through the county, and then an organization called LAFCO, in, in order to make any adjustments, so it's quite a process. And that's never even been a whisper, so far as that, we have to just make do with what there is, right?
You have ten full-time employees, total, or just that you were, that are responsible for?
Yeah, I have, actually, I think we, we just, we just change our position to full-time maintenance staff. We have twelve, twelve full-time employees, then, and then we have, I'll say that we have probably, it's really a large number, because we run the Happy School Program, that's a partner with the school district. I wanna say that we, you know, any, any other, any, any specific time, maybe a little bit more in the summer, we have about a hundred and fifty, you know, part-timers, if you will, even some, see, a few contracts cap.
They be part-time year-round, or part-time seasonal?
Uh, both, actually.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Just kinda leaving to my next thing. You know, 2.2 million dollar budget versus, obviously, we have a much larger budget.
Yes.
How will you bring confidence to staff, to the community of, well, here's a guy, he's, you know, he ran this little show, and we got a really big show in their minds, and it's a lot bigger pot to deal with. So, what would, you know, how do you bring confidence to people, what's your strategy, or what would your plan be?
Sure, and I understand that, you know, I think, first of all, let's put on the record that the largest budget I've ever managed is, is when I was the interim director for Idaho Falls, and it was an 8.5 million dollar budget, I put that budget together, so that's the largest one, but still, in comparison, it's still small, and I, and I get that. To me, I think that what happens is, is that, it's, it's still the same process, it doesn't matter if you have a dollar or if you have ten dollars, the process is still the same. And in fact, in an organization like this, you even have actually more assistance to put things together, so it's really, the process is the same, it's really just a matter of organization. And so, that's what I would say. And I would also say that I've been very successful in my budget development, you know, process in the past, and again, even the last two years, I haven't had one come back to me for any changes at all. So, and again, the vetting process that I have now, I think that's, that's quite a statement to make. So, I, I get how it's done, and again, you know, I, you know, I get the optics of it, but it's still the same process.
See, I wrote a couple of other things I wanted to ask you about here. This kinda goes again with bringing the confidence to the staff and the community, you know, looking at your resume, and they'd say, man, this guy's been a lot of places in a period of time. And, you know, before our previous director, we had two very, very long-term, I mean, they fit right in with the twenty-plus, thirty-plus scenario, and that's gonna be a question from the community, is, how long is this guy gonna be here? How would you bring, you know, what's, how would you help them feel good that this guy's not here for a couple of years, and then he's gonna go somewhere else?
Sure, right, you know, and I, I think this too, that, again, this is not the first time I've tried to get into this organization, so I've got a past history of desire and willingness. I, I get what you're about, I get, I, I think that you're successful, but I know that one of your goals is to have a right position, you want to be one of the best in the country at providing the services. You know what, because of my experiences, I really believe that you are, and, and, and that's what, again, one of the things that, that attracts me to this, is the longevity of your organization, and, and the success that I really feel that you have, and I wanna be part of that. So, I can't overthink that, that, to a certain degree, it's like, it's, maybe I'll use a baseball analogy, I've been playing in the minors for a long time, and what I get is that this is the majors, and I want an opportunity. And I feel like everything that I've done so far has been building the base in order for me to be successful in a position just like this.
Thank you.
Come on, back around the horn.
We're kinda rattle, but, but, yeah, I'm a rattle, I just kinda threw mine.
Okay, so that was your one.
I made mine up on my.
Okay, sounds good. Well, I guess, first of all, so if you were selected for this position, when would you be able to start?
Realistically, excuse me, realistically, I believe that I could start within thirty, forty-five days, gotta talk this over with my wife, and she feels the same way.
The executive director position is in the pay grade twenty-two, it says on sheet twenty-two, it might be twenty-one, I can't remember, I think it was a type of summer. But anyways, salary range is one fourteen to one fifty-two, and HR's got all the details on the fringe benefits. Does this fall in line with your salary requirements, or where would you be at?
I think that, I think your, your compensation package is extremely generous, and I understand that the pace and, you know, and intensity of this job too, you know, is associated with that, but I think that it's, it's more than ample.
Okay, thanks.
One fourteen. Tell us why you're the best candidate for the executive director position for the Park and Rec District.
Well, I've been asked this before, and the first thing I have to say is, I don't know who the other candidates are. I would imagine that, that a number of people applying in the selection process, that they're also very good as well, I've never heard about that. And so, well, I would say that, you know, I have been a district executive director, I'm one now, I know what, what it takes, I understand the political interests involved, and, and, and I believe that, really, with my experience and background, that when, when that person gets hired, and they need to sprint, that I can start the first day sprinting in order to accomplish the goals and mission of this district. And, you know what, I, I, you know, the, I, I consider myself be humble, and that is that certainly, there's a lot to learn, and, and, you know, and I'm not afraid to ask questions, and I know that being part of it, but, you know what, again, I'm, I'm very motivated intrinsically, and, and I have a passion for Parks and Rec, I've dealt with just a, you know, a wide array of incidents and problems and issues that we've been able to work through in the past, I've had some major successes that I can bring to the table, I know how to unify, I can finally compromise at almost any conflict, and I can't help but think that, that, that the passion that I have, and my leadership style, my management style, that I'm exactly who you need right now, especially based on what I've heard is happening here the last year or so.
Thank you.
So, we hire you, we're six months into your tenure, how do we know that we chose the rec guy?
A lot of people get a feel for it immediately, and I think that you're gonna start to get some feedback, and people come to you and say, nah, I talked to that damn guy, and I don't know about that, you know? People are gonna constantly be assessing me and analyzing me, and I'm sure that there's gonna be no doubt that, that, you know, that they're gonna let you know how they feel about me as well. And so, and so, there's that public opinion component out there, and I think that, I think that, you know, the first people that'll feel that is the staff. How do I, how do I, what's my approach to the staff, how do I interact? And, and you know what, I think that it would be your responsibility to stay tuned to that, and to have your ear down to that, and to, and to, you know, to hear what they have to say, so that I am being measured, and you do understand what the feedback is. So, so, if you ask me, you know, I'll think, God, I think I'm doing great, but, you know what, I think at the same time, that if there were, if there were any calls at all, and you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come to you first, I'm gonna say, you know what, I got this going on, you know, what's your opinion about, about, here's, here's some solutions I think would happen, you think this would work, and you will be my sounding board. I, I hope that's a role that you play, because it is one that I've, I've had success with in the past, and, but, you know what, nobody's gonna be analyzing my performance more than me, I'm very critical of, of how I perform, and, and, you know what, I think that keeps me sharp, I think that keeps me on call, I think that keeps me moving forward. But certainly, the public opinion will play a huge part of this, and, you know what, you'll know in the first two, three days I get here, how that's gonna start to go, right?
So, that's, kinda completes our round of questions, and I acknowledge an opportunity, if you have any questions for us, that we can try and answer as best we can.
Wow.
So, you can grill it for the next two hours.
Sure. You know what, actually, I, I know, what I do know is that, first of all, I, I know that, I totally understand the position that you're in, I get, I get some of the history that's occurred here, I think that there might need to be some unification, some healing that might need to occur, certainly, the, you know, to put in some consistency, I think is extremely important, and, and so, I think that your decision is really the hard one. I'm really glad to know that you're going through this, this thorough vetting process. I think that the position, the job that it's responsible for is just too important not to. And so, to include the staff like you have, and the outside groups, you know what, that is, it's what I would do, and I'm glad to have, you know, to be a part of this, because you can't be careful enough. You know, you should turn me upside down and shake all the money out of my pockets just to make sure, I mean, I think that it should be that thorough. And I, you know, I'm sure that there's still gonna be background checks, so and so forth, which I have no concerns about most of the time. And so, and so, beyond that, I think that, you know, what I, I don't know a lot about the compensation package, I know the salary range, for example, but I don't know anything about your, the insurance that you might have, or, you know, you know, any of the other part of the package. So, I guess, if I could find out maybe a little bit more about that, because I know that as soon as I call my wife after this, that's one of the first things she's gonna ask about. So, that would be actually it, most of my, most of my, I think most of any questions I have are about procedures and processes that, you know, that, you know, that, that the staff have to go through to accomplish things. But I've done quite a good research, you know, about this, and again, it's not the first time, so I think I have a pretty good handle about what you're about. And so, I think that really the only question is about, you know, what the rest of the compensation package might look like.
Yeah, I've taken it over to Diane Jones, our HR coordinator.
She'll be with her, right?
Yes, she'll be out there, and you can partner her, that would be the best, because I could profess to tell you, we're, as commissioners, we get a small stipend for our, we don't have access to the, we have real jobs during the day, so, but, if you don't have any other questions, then I guess we'll put a wrap on it.
Okay, well, again, the risk is sounding cheesy, again, I'll say that one last time, that I'd really, even if I'm not hired, and you have somebody better, I really appreciate this opportunity. I think that, that everything that you do should be a learning experience, and you should take that in, and if I don't get this one, you know what, it might be, this experience might help me get the next one. So, again, I think it's an honor, again, the qualified candidacy you have to have got this far, and I just want to let you know, I appreciate your time, and, and the fact that you have such a thorough vetting process, that really means a lot.
Well, we're the precipice on our behalf too, you know, you kind of joke about it, but, you know, to invite candidates from the outside become the hard ones anyway, is a risk that we have to endure, so.
I don't care, that's part of your secret vetting process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have saved your back.
Yes, thank you very much.
It's freezing in here.
She's taking Claire.
She's email that out.
You'll have it before you get to her.
It's January now, so I store a little house chair and I bake the chips with my own favorite. All right, Saturday. We're done. I picked it up pretty quick.
I'm careful with the stuff out there. I'm going to stand this side, I am freezing.
It is so cold in here.
Yeah, thank you, I'm glad, and I feel like it was worse on that side because the window.
I thought it was just me what I was wearing today.
I felt bad, because I felt like I was being rude to him, because I'm sitting there, and I'm freezing.
What do we have to say about this guy? I thought he handled the budget question really well, and you asked him about the optics, you know, but.
You know, there's a number of things that people are going to go, I would pick this guy, you know? If people just look at his resume, they're going to, that's going to come up.
But he, but he, and I honestly wouldn't, knowing how you should answer that question, but he nailed it, in saying that you're going to have more directors that are involved in the process, and really, you're, you know, I'm doing more, put the actual numbers in the budget now than I would be in that process, it's just a matter of dealing with.
No, I thought he did a nice job, I'm sure not one. Anything else? Do we have any order?
Well, I like all season procedures, I've been underlying several times. It's a strategic.
Well, look at your notes.
Sometimes just the attention I take. So they aren't always necessary, but you did say a few things that I liked, like, don't set us up to fail, in the question about.
The question on.
I wrote that, yeah. Oh, about commissioners making promises and going, you know, people getting off track, and I thought that was, that's something that is stupidly alive, but we work together, we don't want to say we're going to fail.
Yeah.
You know, I appreciated that, I thought he was humble and honest.
I like, because I don't care blind, I could see where, after you say that, I mean, Jill comes to me and complains about something, and my immediate reaction is, I don't care, because I got my thing to do, and it's like, that's just a totally wrong thing to say, and it really stuck with me. But that was an interesting line. All right, tomorrow's our last one, so Tara said to me that Jeff has been coming in off his own or something, or that she was wondering if we should give him a gift card or something. So I said, throw in 25 bucks, give him a gift card for his time and effort, even though he called in sick today, but she just felt like.
Did you just get a gold card?
So, do we, is that, is that their payment for the clerk?
It is the gold card, and do we, do we not?
I think he's paid $100 a meeting, or when he goes to the board meeting, I think that's what he paid.
But he's not getting anything to do this, and I don't know who Brayden Ollie is, but...
Well, and...
It's not on the agenda.
I just, I just want, I just.
But that is a good point. Just saying that the discussion is not on the agenda. Yeah, this isn't, this is, this should be handled as a discussion, but we should discuss it differently, good point.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not discussing anything, I just want to point out some things that everybody is aware of this quickly, that the way we currently have things set up, and that could be a topic of discussion for the future, but is that when somebody serves in that role, that when they leave that role, they maintain their role occurrence, so it's, you know, they're truly doing a service for you as they continue to stay on in the compensation they're on, because the reality is, is if they left, that's essentially 95% of their compensation would still be employees.
Well, this wasn't a discussion topic, I'm just telling you, I'm throwing 25 bucks at Jeff, so.
Can we have a copy of the questions that were asked of the user groups? I'm just curious.
She's the one that handled, so we certainly can ask her, yes.
All right, the minutes will show that the executive session was adjourned at, we'll say 4:58 PM. We're back in session, and we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, motion is second, adjourned.